Good morning, everyone, and welcome. The Wednesday, June 6, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting will come to order. If you will, please join me in a brief moment of silence. And if you will, as you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everybody. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and I think I've heard that there are going to be a couple of minor changes.
On consent.
Oh, on consent. Yes, to remove item number six from the consent agenda.
And the public hearing G2 has been postponed as well for the small cell wireless.
Are there any other changes?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, removing item six from the consent agenda and public hearing G2.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We have an agenda. The next item on our agenda is the introduction of the 2018 lifeguards.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here today to help introduce the 2018 Nagshead Ocean Rescue Lifeguard Team as they bustle in. I again hope we have enough room around the perimeter to make sure that everybody gets a good place to stand, and you're going to hear an introduction from each of these individuals, a little bit about where they're from, their names, and, you know, alls I can say is we're really, really pleased to have such a well-qualified crew to come out and help us this summer with safety on the beach, the waterways, and on the ocean in the town of Nagshead. I'll say all this wouldn't have been possible without the extraordinary efforts of Ocean Rescue Captain Chad Moats, who begins working usually in December or January to secure a lifeguard team for the coming season. So with that, I'll introduce Captain Chad Moats.
Good morning, everybody, Mayor, Board Commissioners. Great to see you guys this morning. It's my pleasure to be up here again and introduce this wonderful staff, and many thanks to the town for the support of this program. We spent, started May 13th, our recruiting class came in, and we spent 13 days training up towards Memorial Day weekend with emergency medical responder training and USLA open-water lifeguard training, and got these guys prepared to go start on the beach Memorial Day weekend. We've been out there for about a week and a half, and it's been very successful since the start of the season, busy Memorial Day weekend, and then this week we've had some increase in surf and activity up there on the beach. So, without further, I have these guys come up to the microphone and introduce themselves one by one.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Ken Savage. I've been with Nagshead Ocean Rescue for five years, and it's a great organization to work for. Captain Moats does a great job, so we've had some good training this year, and I'm really excited to be here.
Morning. My name's Matt Crumley, and I'm from Harrisonburg, Virginia, and this is my fourth year working for Nagshead.
Good morning. My name is Will. I'm from Montreal, Canada, and this is my second summer working here for NHR.
Morning. My name's Nick Brady. I'm from Northern Virginia, and this will be my sixth season with Nagshead.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Jacob Ramey. This is my fourth season with Nagshead, and I'm originally from Newport News, Virginia.
Hello, my name's Noah Parsons from Kedivel Hills, and this is my third year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Good morning. My name's Sean Kenny. This is my eighth year working Ocean Rescue. I just spent the winter, our winter, in Australia, working down there as a lifeguard, and I'm looking forward to a great summer. Born and raised here, and yeah.
Hey, guys. My name's Matt Quinn. I'm from Savannah, Georgia, and this is my fifth year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hello, my name is Bryce. I'm from Manio, North Carolina, and this is my fifth year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Phil. I'm from Montreal, Canada, and this is my second year working for Nagshead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Morgan. I'm from Yorktown, Virginia. It's my second year.
Hi, I am Penelope. I'm from Montreal as well, and it's my second year. Thanks for having us.
Hello, I'm Tyler Burks from Jamesville, North Carolina. This is my fourth year with Nagshead Ocean Rescue.
Hello, I'm Jessica Wallace. I'm from Kitty Hawk, and this is my third year.
Good morning. My name's Clay Denham. I'm from Los Angeles, California. This is my first year with Nagshead.
My name is Coleman Flynn. I'm from Greensboro, North Carolina. This is my second year.
Hi, I'm Sarah, and I am originally from Hampton, Virginia, and this is my fourth year with Nagshead.
Hi, my name is Amelie. I'm from Montreal, and it's my second year with Nagshead.
Hi, my name's Alex. I'm from Northern Virginia. This is my first year working for Nagshead.
Hi, my name is Lane Apple, and I'm from Dallas, Texas, and this is my first year.
Hi, I'm Amber Lewis. I'm from Wilmington, North Carolina, and it's my first year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Caroline Jarvis. I'm from Manio, and this is my second year working for Nagshead.
Hi, I'm Erica Ross. I'm also from Montreal, Canada, and this is my first year working for Nagshead.
Hi, my name is Hadi. I'm from Quebec, Canada, and it's my first year as well.
Good morning. I'm Maggie Weisman. I'm originally from Blacksburg, Virginia, and this is my second year working here.
Good morning. My name is Jody Cheeky. I'm from Bethelm, Pennsylvania, and this is my first year here. Thanks for having us.
Hi, my name is Chris. I'm from Quebec, and it's my second summer in Nagshead.
Good morning. My name is James. I'm from Montreal as well, and this is my second year working for Nagshead.
Hi, I'm Jacob Todd. I'm from Cape May, New Jersey, and it's my first year here.
Hi, I am Vincent Bedard. I am from Levee, Quebec, and this is my first summer here.
Hi, my name is Nick. I'm from Richmond, Virginia, and this is my first year for Nagshead.
Hello, I'm Mandy, and I'm from Kitty Hawk, and this is my first year.
Okay, so that's about everybody. There's a couple people that couldn't make it here this morning. We've got a crew going through their Safe Rider ATV training over at Jockeys Ridge this morning, and a couple part-time people that work at Dare County EMS that are on shift with EMS this morning. But for the most part, this is our crew for the summer, so if you see them out on the beach, say hello, and if you have any questions, feel free to go up to the guards and ask some questions, but looking forward to a great summer. Thank you, guys.
We will. Thank you very much for bringing everybody, for getting everybody together this year and bringing everybody in. It's really nice to see the depth of experience that we have in this crew. Big welcome to the first-year people, which is really great, and we just pray that everybody stays safe this summer, and we really appreciate everything that you guys do. You're the face of the town for a lot of our tourists, and we just really appreciate you. Any other board members?
Thank you.
Thanks. Please be safe.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Welcome back.
Very good. All right, Cliff, the next item on our agenda are some recognitions.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I'd like to ask Andy Garman, Deputy Town Manager, to come up and introduce our new Chief Building Inspector, Corey Tate.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This morning, I'd like to introduce our new Chief Building Inspector, Corey Tate, William Corey Tate. He is from Currituck County, lives in Coinjock. He comes to us from Dare County. He served as the Chief Building Inspector there and previously served in the town of Duck and in Pasquotank County as a Building Inspector. He's worked in this profession for roughly 13 years. He has his Level 3 certifications in plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and building, and a Level 2 fire certification. Corey's also a certified floodplain manager and a CAMA LPO. Prior to his government service, he worked as an electrician. He's also a master electrician. Corey is also a licensed general contractor. Corey has a degree from Campbell University in pre-law, and he lives with his wife Angie. He has three children, Emma, Lauren, and Thomas, all of which graduated from high school. He's easy to work with, brings a new and unique perspective to our department, and he certainly hit the ground running since May 1. We're very pleased to have him join our team, and we wish you a long and rewarding career with the town. I would just like to say thank you to everyone, to the staff, Mayor Cahoon, and the Board of Commissioners for this opportunity. I'm very honored to be able to serve in this capacity for you guys, and I look forward to working with each of you in the coming years, so thank you very much.
Next, we have Deputy Fire Chief Shane Height come up to introduce the new firefighter, Mr. Adam Mullins.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity as well to come before you today and introduce our newest firefighter EMT, Adam Mullins. Adam currently resides in Manio, but he comes to us from Fredericksburg, Virginia, where he lived for the past 18 years. Adam began his firefighting career as a junior volunteer firefighter with his local fire department, but when he turned 18, of course, he became an active operational member of this department. Adam was hired by the City of Fredericksburg Fire Department five years ago. While there, he became certified as a firefighter Level 2, EMT Basic, Driver Operator for Fire Engines and Aerial Devices, and a Fire Instructor. Adam was also a member of their Swiftwater Rescue Team and served as an acting fire officer as needed. Adam's hobbies include fishing and enjoying the beach, and we look forward to many years of good service to us. Adam?
Yes, sir.
Next, we have Police Chief Kevin Brinkley to recognize Tim Armstrong on his five years of service with the town.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. It's my pleasure to come before you today to recognize Police Officer First Class Tim Armstrong for five years of service. Tim is originally from Terrell County, and after graduating high school, he attended Pitt Community College in Greenville. While at Pitt, he received his Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice in 2008 and his Basic Law Enforcement Training Certification in 2009. He began his law enforcement career with the Winterville Police Department just outside of Greenville and worked there for almost three years before joining us in 2013. Tim is a certified radar and toximeter operator and is a member of our joint agency tactical team. Tim recently received his intermediate law enforcement certification from the North Atlantic Criminal Justice Education Training and Standards Commission. Officers can apply for this certification, or certification level, after meeting certain criteria with education, in-service training, and experience. So we're certainly proud of Tim for his accomplishments on his intermediate certification. In his free time, Tim enjoys fishing, surfing, and working out. Tim, congratulations on your five years of service.
Thank you. This morning, Paige, if you'll come up to the podium, please. It's an active time of year for Dowdy Park. There was a big yoga class there yesterday for the free yoga. We have the farm market, our first farmer's market coming up, so I'd asked if Paige would come and give us a chance to meet her and talk about what's coming up with Dowdy Park. Paige is from Elizabeth City. She's been in Kedivel Hills for 24 years. She has two children who were raised in Dare County schools, Ethan and Peyton. She worked in the hospitality industry for the past 20 years, and we're very glad to have her working for us this summer on Dowdy Park. So Paige, if you'll catch us up on what's going on there.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. We, the Arts and Cultural Committee, are excited to host 30 vendors for our first market, which is this next Thursday. We encourage all of you to come. Over half of our vendors are actual farmers with perishable items, so bring your cooler because you can take home different chickens and shrimp and local perishable items that we sell here on the Outer Banks. We have reached out to other farmers in neighboring areas, Swan Quarter, Edenton, some from Elizabeth City, and even in Currituck. So we have really tried to gather the people, the local people, to make this a success. We're super excited. This next Thursday is the first, from 9:00 to 2:00, and I look forward to seeing you all.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions from any Commissioners? Great. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Mr. Leidy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board will receive a public comment that allows members of the public to address the Board of Commissioners with any concerns or issues that you may have. This is not an opportunity for dialogue. The Board does not usually respond to public comment, but anyone who wishes to address the Board may do so now. I will also be keeping track of the time. There is a five-minute limit. So is there anybody who wishes to address the Board? If not, if not, we can close the public comment. Mr. Mayor?
Great. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda, which was modified earlier by the removal of item six, so a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as modified. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Great. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda are the public hearings. Mr. Leidy?
Yes, thank you much, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board will begin its public hearing to consider citizen comment on the town manager's proposed operating budget for the July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, a proposed fiscal year, including capital improvement project requests for the 1819 fiscal year through the 2223 fiscal year, and an updated consolidated fee schedule. I assume that we will begin this public hearing by the presentation. Any comments by the manager?
Just simply wanted to bring the attention to the memo that's included in your packet. It summarizes the first two workshops, the boards where you've got a third workshop on June 11th, but this memo simply summarizes what you've discussed so far in the general fund, the increase and decrease, and that's out to an $82,400 increase primarily due to the funds budgeted to, as a contribution to the water fund, to pay back for the purchase of the Soundside Event Site. So that brings the general fund budget ordinance, as it's been discussed to date, of $19,145,387. And then in the water fund, there's a net decrease of $3,600, bringing that ordinance to $3,672,355. So that's just simply to paraphrase or to summarize the discussions you've had thus far.
All right. Would any member of the public like to comment on the proposed budget? If so, this is your opportunity to do so. Any takers at all? Any comment? All right. At this time, we will conclude the public hearing on the town manager's proposed operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions from board members at this point? Okay, great. Thank you. Public hearing number two was struck from the agenda, so the next item of business are reports and recommendations from the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Director.
Mayor, before we start...
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'd like to be recused from this because I'm not sure I can be totally impartial after my recent experiences with Charter and how they treat our local business community. This office would not be receptive to businesses going in. If you're a business and you need service, you have to call, and it takes you three weeks to get a remote. So whereas if you're a resident, you can walk in and get one immediately, so I'm just not sure that my impartiality and alliance to our local business community would be best served by me sitting on this site plan.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that if a member of the Board of Commissioners does not believe that they can be fair and impartial in consideration of this type of site plan application, that it would be appropriate for the Board to vote to recuse that member from participating.
Thank you. So a motion, I believe, would be in order to excuse Commissioner Cahoon? Okay, motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to recuse Commissioner Cahoon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I believe it's necessary that I recuse myself since their firm is representing this project.
Is there a motion to recuse the mayor?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. I have a motion. A second. All those in favor of recusing me, they signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
So it would be appropriate for the Mayor pro tem then to preside over the... May I say something, please? Yes, sir. I have the exact same feelings as Commissioner Cahoon, although I do believe I can impartially render decision on a building. If you feel that you can make a decision about this application fairly and impartially and based solely on the information presented during this presentation, then it would be appropriate for you to participate. Thank you.
Don't need to move over, do I?
No, you don't.
Okay, well, that was kind of unexpected, so.
Good morning, Mayor pro tem and Commissioners. As you noted, I am up here this morning to present a site plan review. Alva Marl and Associates has prepared the information on behalf of Charter Communications. Their request is to construct a one-story, 3,440-square-foot, one-story structure at 2400 South Virginia Dare Trail. The property is located in a C2 zoning district, so office use would be appropriate here. Pull up some drawings while we're talking. So this property, it is located within a flood zone. It's located in an AE10 flood zone. We do have a one-foot freeboard, so the lowest horizontal member of this structure would need to be at a minimum of 11 feet mean sea level. In looking at their site plan, they're proposing to be at 11.83 for their elevation, so they would be compliant with that regard. As far as lot coverage goes on this site, as many of you may be aware, the previous structure that was here was a different configuration. It was more of a more elongated L shape. We have this structure here, and there were some other parking improvements along the rear. So at that time, the lot coverage on this site was approximately 61.8%, and you're allowed to have 55% in this zoning district, so they were essentially non-conforming at 61.8%. With their proposed revisions, they're coming in at 59% lot coverage, so there's been an overall decrease in the amount of impervious surfaces, and so therefore, lot coverage would be deemed compliant. The proposed building height for this one-story structure is coming in at 28.7. We allow structures with an 812 roof pitch, which this structure has, to go as high as 42, so it's well within compliance for building height. In terms of architectural design, any new commercial structure must have 125 architectural design points, and they have achieved 127 through the use of porches, pitched roofs, combination base form, simulated wood shingles, and some various other architectural elements such as gable brackets. With regard to buffering and landscaping, the applicant, we do have a section of the code that requires a five-foot-wide buffer yard C be provided anywhere there's parking adjacent to a right-of-way. So as you can see, the applicant has proposed a buffer yard C along the east property boundary adjacent to Virginia Dare Trail. They've also proposed plantings along Gallery Row, but when you look at this, you have these three entrances here, and when you impose your 10-by-70 site triangle over each of those entrances, there's not a lot of room for any type of tree or any vegetation that would get above three feet. So they've supplemented in here with lots of plants and grasses and herbaceous plantings. They have, however, backed up here and proposed seven Leyland cypresses for their tree species to be planted here adjacent to this metal structure. They did that as a means to offer some relief, visibility relief, of this metal structure from Virginia Dare Trail. And while there is a little bit of parking here along the side street, once the site triangle is imposed here, there's really not a lot of opportunity for plantings along this property line. In conjunction with that, though, you might be familiar, there was a chain-link fence along the northern property boundary, also along the western property boundary and the southern boundary as well. They have just proposed a six-foot-tall wooden fence instead of that chain-link fence here along the side street and along this southern property boundary. They needed to keep the chain-link fence along this northern boundary with the entrances because they have a gate, an automatic gate for these two entrances, and they have it that way for security purposes. So they were not able to eliminate the chain-link fence, but for aesthetics of the neighborhood, they did agree to go ahead and install that same six-foot-tall wooden fence in front of the chain-link where possible and to go and to include those plantings as well, so there will be quite a bit of visual relief from the Gallery Row property line. So the town code also speaks to a need for either preserving 10% of existing vegetation on-site or planting 15%. vegetation on-site or planting fifteen percent. Based upon the scope of work that they were undertaking here, it did not trigger compliance with that section of the code, so they did not have to come back in and replant fifteen percent of the lot. But they did comply with the buffer yard C. In terms of lighting, they have provided a lighting plan to the town. That lighting plan has been approved, but as always, we will do a light audit prior to issuance of any final zoning once constructed. They have not proposed any signage at this time. It was my understanding that this new office structure would not necessarily be available to the public, and therefore no signage would be necessary, but if down the road they do request signage, that will be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department. They do have approval from the Dare County Health Department to install a septic system or to actually hook the new structure up to the existing septic system. That improvement permit was included in your package. As far as stormwater management and traffic circulation, our town engineer gave that a thorough review, and he issued a memo dated May eleventh, 2018, addressing any concerns related to stormwater management or traffic circulation. When this plan came out of Planning Board and came before the Board of Commissioners, they had addressed most of those issues, if not all of those issues, I believe. So the town engineer issued a revised memo dated May twenty-ninth, 2018. That's included in your packet, and as you can see, they've addressed all the concerns, and a lot of what's in there are just conditions upon completion of the project, like filing an operation and maintenance agreement and that type of thing. In terms of fire, as always, the new construction will need to comply with applicable fire prevention codes, and the Public Works Director has reviewed the proposal and found compliance. Staff finds that the project is consistent with the U standards of the code, and we further find that the applicant's decision to go ahead and place that six-foot tall wooden fence along the northern boundary is in good keeping with the intent of the district and the aesthetics through this area. So with that, staff recommends approval of the site plan as it's been presented, noting that the updated memo from the town engineer with regard to stormwater management and traffic circulation would need to be complied with. The Planning Board at their May fifteenth meeting recommended unanimously to approve the site plan as presented, also contingent that any concerns addressed by the town engineer were deemed compliant prior to final zoning. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. We have the architect, Mark Caston, in the audience, and Mike Moreway here. He's the engineer on this, and we also have a representative from Charter available. Should you have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Wyatt?
I have a question that doesn't pertain most anything other than knowledge, but I think it's okay. One oh-two, there's a section labeled touchdown. Can somebody explain to me what touchdown means?
Hello, this is Mark. I'm Mark Caston with Cahoon &amp; Caston Architects. That's just an area where people who don't have a specific desk there can come and work on a computer and do some paperwork and that kind of thing on an interim sort of basis. The people who are working in the field, it's that's what...
Is that a technical term?
It's not football.
Is that a technical term for that sort of use?
I guess so.
Yeah, it's a standard term.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any discussion? Yes, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah, we're fine. I had no idea this was going to happen. I thought there'd be some comment on the budget. Mayor Pro Tem?
Aye.
All right. So I take it the next item on our agenda would be consideration of an amendment to Town Chapter Eight, Beaches and Waterways, Tents on the Beach.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is an ordinance amendment to Chapter Eight regarding beaches and waterways. As the Board is aware, in 2014, the town adopted an ordinance that pertains to the placement of personal items on the beach. At that time, we were noticing a significant increase in the usage of tents on the beach and canopies. A lot of these tents and canopies were being left on the beach during the entire day and overnight as well. We were having problems with these structures getting basically abandoned or during storms being destroyed, and our public work staff were having to go out and clean the beach of these structures. Additionally, the Ocean Rescue Division was having problems getting up and down the beach in some instances where tents were being placed near the toe of the dune. Also, in some cases, there were line-of-sight issues from lifeguard stands, and so this ordinance was adopted to attempt to address a lot of those issues. We adopted an ordinance that basically says you can't leave these items unattended overnight and that the Ocean Rescue Division has the authority to ask the tents to be moved or relocated if they create issues for their operations. Since that time, we've done a lot of educating of beachgoers. We've seen a lot better compliance with the tent ordinance being specifically the tents that are being abandoned overnight. For a few years, we were actually going and collecting the tents. We've found that we haven't had to do this as much in the fourth year now that this has been in place, but we continue to monitor this. And as the Board is aware, there are issues that still exist on the beach with regards to tents and canopies. And one of the things that the Board has discussed is that people are taking up large sections of the beach, lashing these tents and canopies together, and sometimes these tents are very large, and so we've been requested to draft an ordinance that would address that. This is an amendment to the original ordinance. It would limit the size of tents to nine by nine and twelve feet in height. It also requires a ten-foot separation between tents, and they can't be lashed together. You know, there are businesses now that are offering concierge services on the beach where tents, they will place tents at the request of visitors to be placed out there, and we're continuing to monitor this activity as well. The businesses that are doing this will be contacted if this ordinance is adopted to make them aware of the new regulations, and we'll keep the Board posted with any new information we have about the practices that are occurring on the beach. With that said, would I ask for any comments or questions about the ordinance?
Commissioners?
I think something needs to be done because there are starting to be tent cities, and I think this ordinance may address that. And I think the other thing we're going to find is, after looking at our beach this past weekend, it's a very diminished beach. It's very narrow in width with a steep, pretty steep drop-off, so it's going to be more congestion and more, the possibility for more confrontations over space.
Right. This is just anecdotal, but most of the information I've heard about people that know that this is coming up have suggested just eliminate tents and only allow umbrellas. So I'm real comfortable with what's being presented, if not more.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, one of the things that I've asked, talked to staff a little bit about, is increased level of communication with the companies that are setting up the tents in particular. Observe, talking about the diminished beach this morning, as I was just before I exited the beach, there was one of the companies that was setting up four tents. They were on four, four or five lots in a row. They were, they would have met the current spacing requirement, but they were so close to the line that our trash truck drives on the beach, they were hard up against those ruts, and things that they had not yet put under the tent, like coolers, forced our pickup truck to drive down on the beach around them while they were in the process of setting up. Now, they weren't outside the timeframe or anything, but we just need to communicate with them, get them, follow the rules that we have in place, you know, and police one another. I mean, you know, let's not, let's not sort of foul things up, especially in a season where we do have a tight beach. So, thank you. If there are no other comments or questions, then I think a motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is would be old business items from previous meetings, the beach nourishment project.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The item, this item, we have two different items for you to consider. The first being the interlocal agreement with Dare County that speaks to the county's contribution from the County Beach Nourishment Fund towards our project. This interlocal agreement was approved by the Dare County Board of Commissioners and signed by Chairman Woodard dated May seventh. The, this interlocal is very similar to the interlocal that we entered into in 2011 for the first project. You'll see that the agreement that we've entered into with our estimated cost of our project to be twenty-five million five hundred and forty-six. The town paying for half of that from the issuance of special obligation bonds, and the county paying for the other half, twelve million seven hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. Beginning in 2019, by fiscal year end, the county will contribute six hundred thousand dollars a year for the next five years from the beach nourishment, County Beach Nourishment Fund, and then they're going to finance a portion of the remaining portion, nine million seven hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars, which they will reimburse us through requests for drawdowns from our finance officer as we move forward with the construction contract. It contemplates a few other things, requirements on our part that we're, it spells them out more or less in order, first being the permits and then some other things from there that we're working towards. So we're very thankful to have this contribution from the county, so that if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions? No. If there are no questions and no discussion, then a motion would be in order.
Make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement between the town and Agg's Head and Dare County regarding beach nourishment financing.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you.
Thank you. The second is continuation of the requirement to get the funding as a findings resolution. It's part of the application to the Local Government Commission. It's titled Resolution of the Town in Agg's Head, North Carolina, Directing the Application to the Local Government Commission for Approval of the Special Obligation Bonds, Requesting Local Government Commission Approval of the Town's Special Obligation Bonds and Certain Related Matters. The fourth whereas speaks to the issue of this really, and that's the town in aggregate principal amount not to exceed twelve million, a series of special obligation bonds. In that same whereas, it also contemplates the, an issuance for the FEMA. Excuse me, that would be in the first. This, this is an application, this findings resolution allows us to apply for the town-only portion as well as if we get, if we end up getting the FEMA portion, we can do both of those. I think the rest of it is pretty much self-explanatory. It is part of the requirement for getting the issuance from the local, or the approval from the Local Government Commission, and I don't know, Amy, if you have anything else to add.
I think Cliff covered it well. This was drafted by our bond counsel, and like Cliff said, it sort of just lays out our request that we are going to send this application to the LDC for approval, and we are going to go after the special obligation bond financing, and this sort of explains that financing and that application for approval.
And again, this is similar to what we had to do for the 2011 project minus the FEMA language.
Any questions, Commissioners? Yes. Commissioner Walters?
I have just one. Have we heard anything from FEMA?
Yes. I am waiting for the official letter of approval or award from FEMA. I was contacted last week from North Carolina Emergency Management that the check was in the mail, and I have eagerly looked every day since, but we feel pretty certain, I know we don't want to jinx ourselves, but it appears that we're going to get the funding.
Yes. Great. Fine.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? In that case, a motion on the findings resolution would be in order.
Someone?
All right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consideration or the findings resolution, excuse me. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda would be committee reports. This is a time for Board members to report on any committee meetings that they may have attended. So are there, are there reports?
Nothing on stormwater.
No? I'm going to tell one anecdote, just because I really like it. I went to, I attended Rural Day, which is, which is focused on the eighty rural counties in North Carolina, and Dare County is one of those. It was a really great, very well-structured day of presentations on access to broadband, access to health care, and support of entrepreneurship and small business in rural communities. The neatest story of the day was a gentleman who lived in one of the coastal counties a little south of us where a landfill was leaking methane, and the county manager had a consultant come in and tell them, "Well, you don't have a viable quantity, and you should just vent it so that it's not a safety hazard, and there's nothing else you can really do about it." The gentleman who was telling the story had retired from the energy business, and the county manager knew him and said, "Would you take a look at this?" He figured out a way to collect the, he said, "It's a small quantity, and I'm not going to remember the number right, but I think it was like fifty cubic feet a minute," or some number that was not economically viable, but he said, "It's not nothing. You can do something with it." And what they did was they collected that methane, and then they built a small craft park next to the landfill where they used the methane to fire pottery, to fire metalworking, smithy, for glass blowing, for all those kinds of activities for which there was enough methane to do that, and so they generated some jobs, and now they have expanded that to collecting waste oil from the community to fire additional appliances for craftspeople. And he said something that we've all talked about, more outside-the-box thinking, which I think this Board is being very, very good at, and he said, "Your problems are opportunities. Think outside the box. If the box is still in the way, kick the box out of the way." And I just thought that was, as we think about issues like affordable housing, like air stormwater, those kinds of issues, that that kind of outside-the-box thinking was he encouraged, so I just thought I would share that. Thank you. Now would be the time for Board and Committee appointments, and we have an... those kinds of issues, that, that kind of outside the box thinking was, was he encouraged. So, I just thought I would share that, thank you. Now would be the time for board and committee appointments, and we have an opening for the Arts and Culture Committee. Andy, are you speaking to this, or do we need anybody to speak to this?
I don't think so.
Okay. So, you have in your packet a tracking list about, of the members who serve on the committee. You have a list of eligible candidates, and so a nomination would be in order.
I'd like to nominate Samantha Locke.
Okay. Thank you, that was Samantha Locke, I'm sorry.
Can we get Commissioner to speak loud, a little louder this morning?
I'm sorry, I'll move up. I've been fighting a gnat over here, so I'm trying.
All right. So, the name of Samantha Locke has been placed into nomination. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I believe we can close the nominations. So, we have one nomination and I guess a motion to adopt her by acclamation would be in order.
Submove.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second to approve Samantha Locke as a member of the Arts and Culture Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, thank you very much, and thanks, please express our thanks to Samantha for serving. Yes, Commissioner Fuller?
I just have a, a personal request.
Yes.
If I have names submitted to me for a board.
Yes.
I would like for the age and the gender not to be included. Oh, mine, I don't care about anybody else, but I do not think it's proper to review people based on age or gender.
Okay, thank you. I think that we can, we can address that. I think that we've done that in order to try to get some age and gender diversity, as much diversity as we could.
I, I actually think it's illegal personally.
Okay.
And you can ask the attorney his opinion, but I don't think we should review people based on age or gender.
All right, thank you, we'll take that under consideration, appreciate that. The next item on the agenda would be an update on the Focus Unified Development Ordinance.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Happy to provide an update on the Focus project for you. The, the technical committee has continued to meet, and they have two to eight reviewed Articles 1 through 6. And staff has continued to work with our consultant to finish up the draft Articles 7, 7 and 8. We've also been working on three different or separate text amendments. That would be the sidewalk construction one as far as evaluating options for potentially the installation or inclusion of sidewalks as part of the development approval. The home stay or short-term rentals and the affordable and workforce, workforce housing have all been being worked on simultaneously. But many of our policy objectives that are outlined in the comprehensive plan are addressed through these Articles 1 through 8. So, there's around 33 policies that are, would be included and accomplished through adoption of Articles 1 through 8. And we recognize that the board is concerned with the timing of the implementation of these and the urgency to continue to bring forward these policy objectives without losing ground as development continues to occur. So, staff, staff suggesting that we bring forward the portions 1 through 8 as, as well as the commercial design part as soon as they're complete, rather than waiting till the end of the document. There are nine goals that I've listed out in the memo that are of the UDO and that would be addressed by the comprehensive plan policies through implementation of the UDO. And Articles 1 through 8, those nine goals would include the definitions, revisions to the definitions, revisions to our zoning district descriptions, inclusion with that, the inclusion of several new zoning districts, a revised table of permitted and prohibited uses, a revised supplemental standards for all the uses, the zoning district standards, dimensional requirements, as well as the commercial design guidelines. So, if, if we took this approach, this would only leave a portion of Article 9, manufactured homes and subdivision regulations. Article 10, which is really centered around our environmental regulations, flood damage prevention, sedimentation erosion control and stormwater. And maybe a portion of our appendix left to move forward at that future time. I wanted to review with you quickly a little bit about how the comprehensive plan supports the work that we're doing with the UDO. The vision, and going back and working with the advisory committee and the public, the vision really remained unchanged from previous land use plans that we've had in the past. But kind of the core of that vision statement with the comprehensive plan centers around the, the character and especially it's referenced as the Agg's Head character. So, striving to preserve and protect the Agg's Head character, environment, tourism-based economy and sense of place in order to ensure a high quality of life for both residents and a memorable vacation experience. So, the founding or the underpinning or foundational components kind of of that vision, there were 12 themes that I listed out, that's on page four of your memo, that are, that were foundational to the goals of the UDO. They're pretty, they're pretty close and similar to, to what we brought forward to be our goals. So, these were the issues that were repeatedly brought up by the committee and the public, and they appeared in different ways through our policies and actions in the document. But I think policy LU1, ensure that Agg's Head character is preserved as a single-family residential beach community with ties to its natural environment. It's on page five of your memo. Probably accomplishes and defines Agg's Head character best in a summary statement. So, the remaining vision, the goals, the themes, the policies and actions all collectively work together to further define what that Agg's Head character is. And while many of the policies and actions related to preserving the character of town are accomplished through the UDO rewrite of the code, but they will primarily be addressed through commercial design standards. So, there are these nine kind of goals from the UDO that on page 6 through 8 of your memo. And in the memo, staff broke those out as listing kind of the goal first and then defining kind of, defining the policy that supported that goal from the comprehensive plan underneath of that. So, there, there were a total of 95 policies listed in the comprehensive plan, and accomplishing these first nine of goals of the UDO would accomplish 33 or, or 33 of those policies, and that's only Articles 1 through 8 again. So, I briefly want to review these goals and, and, and the supporting land use policy. The first one is reevaluating uses for each zoning district to ensure that uses align with the intent of the district. That's supported by our land use policy 2. Develop separate zoning districts and regulations that recognize appropriate scale and pattern of development for the US 158 NC 12 quarters. And that's a core piece of the development standards or the supplemental standards and the district, zoning district visions that are moving forward. LU5, promote contiguous and cohesive nodes of commercial development of appropriate size and massing for the surrounding area. That's directly, again, related to a core piece of kind of the vision for moving forward. LU9, encourage land uses that serve the needs of both year-round and seasonal residents in support of the town's overall vision for the community. Second goal is to establish appropriate development standards for various areas of the town in terms of scale, massing, overall building size and architectural features. That's supported by four different goals. I'm going to focus on the first two here, develop separate zoning districts. So, that LU2 and LU5 again are repeated as being accomplished through this, along with policy LU15, which directly looks at promoting architectural standards for commercial development and keeping within the Agg's Head style architecture. And lastly, the LU24, which deals with flexibility in the application of design standards. Goal 3, diversifying the town's housing stock and accommodation. That's supported by policy LU27, which references expanding the types of housing accommodations available for varying income levels, age, population, and also the seasonal workforce. Goal 4, or D is referenced in your memo, provide a new approach to evaluating commercial projects in terms of commercial design standards that will more holistically address overall project design rather than focusing on building design. And so, that would get into addressing scale and massing, building size, architectural features, building orientation, at a street and pedestrian environment, landscaping, open space, parking lot design, traffic circulation, all of those things. So, there's 10 policies in our comprehensive plan that address this goal of the UDO. And again, they deal with, LU16 and 18 deal with a dark night sky. LU18 and 19 deal with signage. LU20 through 22 deal with vegetation. LU23 and 26 deal with parking and access. And again, LU15 probably is the backbone of this, which says to promote architectural standards for commercial development and keeping within Agg's Head style architecture. Our next goal deals with the zoning of Beach Road and incorporating more flexibility for combinations of both residential and commercial uses, or, excuse me, residential and non-residential uses, which is consistent with kind of the older historical style development that we've seen. That's supported by LU4, which directly says to encourage a balance of uses along Beach Road, characterized by diversity of accommodations in small neighborhood-serving businesses. And LU11 also speaks to that diversity. Our next goal is to create flexibility in our zoning standards for neighborhood commercial activity nodes. That's again supported by policy LU11, which speaks to supporting mixed-use development or accessory residential dwellings along the, the two different quarters in town, and also policy EC5. Our last three goals I'm going to move through quickly, so they are providing flexibility for development and redevelopment. The land use policies we've already mentioned previously, LU24, 25 and EC6 support this. Defining an appropriate size, scale and development on the oceanfront, LU3, and then policy NR16, which says to minimize the impacts of future sea level rise. This was a, a first for our community to incorporate sea level rise. We're only the second community in North Carolina to adopt official policy that states this. So, this is a progressive policy for us, and we're actively working towards that. And lastly, encouraging resilient development practices that preserve natural environments and ocean and estuarine shorelines. And there are a couple of policies here that address water quality and then disaster resilience and sea level rise is referenced kind of below that in the memo. So, we would ask for the board's feedback and direction concerning the adoption of Articles 1 through 8 and the revised commercial design standards ahead of the remaining articles of the UDO.
Okay, thank you. Board members? Yes, Webb?
I, I have a couple, and I guess some, a couple substantive, but one process. The one process is, when do we do it? When do we do what we've just been asked to do?
Right.
That's the overall thing, but then like a couple of substantive things, like for me at least, like going to page 6C, and this might just be my lack of knowledge or I might be opposed to something, but it says, "Two examples suggested in the plan included allowing accessory structures, allowing cottage courts and reevaluating regulations for hotels." Well, in my opinion, we already have accessory structures, so I don't even know what this means. You know, so it's either a lack of understanding on my part or it means something that I don't know what we're talking about. And then I can go on further, if you want me to go on further, with a number of others, but that's just an example of where I, if I'm going to look at something and be asked to adopt it, I need to understand what I'm being asked to adopt.
Right. And I, I think there's probably a word missing there, meaning accessory dwelling structures. But one of the things that we've talked about doing, and this goes back to process, is since this is a, a new board and with various levels of involvement, is that some point before we get to the, get there to adoption, we probably need a workshop with this board to go through this, because there's some things I don't think you can catch up on just, just by reading them. And even though, if you do read them, they do need to be completely accurate. So, go, go ahead, what's your next?
Well, I can do another one real quick, just on page 7. It had something to do with like home occupation, I don't know. Okay, E, incorporating more flexibility for home occupations. I see that as nothing but a slippery slope. And I'm absolutely opposed to it unless somebody tells me what that means. I mean, we already have home occupations, we know what they are. This doesn't say anything about mixed use. This says allowing home occupations. And I'm, I for one, don't necessarily understand why we would do that. So, there, that's just another example.
Okay.
I think to reiterate what Commissioner Cahoon was saying is that in order, we're really looking at the process here, and we would move forward, draft Articles 1 through 8, kind of under the schedule that we had a plan to move forward the rest of the UDO, which was ending up sometime at the end of the summer or September, September, October timeframe. But we would need to do in order to get your buy-in and better explain some of these things that you have concerns about, how these policies would be addressed. We definitely would have to have a work session, that was part of the original process. When we get, when we got through sections 1 through 8, we would sit down and have a work session with the board of commissioners, the planning board, and then the technical committee to kind of further elaborate and explain how that would be addressed. So, I think by asking to move forward in this direction, we would be giving you the tools that you need to address development more quickly is kind of the intent of this, to better address development that's coming, development that's coming forward in the future, rather than having to wait on the rest of the ordinance. It's not necessarily saying that you all would agree or buy into all the different policies that are addressed in here, but just can we move this forward in a way that allows us to bring it to you sooner?
So, the question before us is really, do we, do we ask the staff to bring forward three-quarters of the work that's complete, that would be complete and ready for us to consider, without waiting to have 100% of the work complete and ready for us to consider? So that we can take advantage of, of what is, would be complete and available, ready for our review or debate, and then our adoption. And this is something that I, I think has come out of some conversations where we're seeing development continue and missing opportunities for getting some of the things that we've asked for in our, in our comprehensive plan. And we'd like to go ahead and start capturing those sooner rather than later, perhaps by several months. And I don't have a problem, I personally don't have a problem doing that, and would like to get as much of the... like to get as much of the, I would like to get everything that is ready and complete adopted as soon as it can be adopted. Again, being ready and complete, what I would ask staff to communicate back to the committee, because we've asked the committee to put in a lot of work, and, and when committees contribute that much time, I, I think there's a concern on their part about what's going to happen with their work, and, and I would just ask that the committee be told, we're not trying to cherry pick or somehow take apart this thing that you're working on. We appreciate all the work that you're putting in, we just want to bring forward the parts that are ready, and, you know, no reflection on the committee or its work, and, and no sort of nefarious intent there to, to modify or undo anything that they've done. So, Webb? Yeah, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, Webb.
I sort of disagree with what you're saying. We're responsible for adopting this, and I have no prob, I absolutely appreciate committee work, but committee work doesn't necessarily equal the time board value, and we don't know what the time board value is. I don't have a problem cherry picking. If it's something I don't like, I will say I don't like it. And I will try to encourage y'all to see it my way.
Okay.
The committee may see it entirely different, but it's up to us to adopt this, because this is ours, it's not the committee's.
Right.
So I disagree from that standpoint. I'm agree on the standpoint of bringing stuff forward, because, but sitting here or in a staff position, you work on something for a year, and then nobody says anything, and then somebody comes at the very last meeting and starts ripping things to pieces, and you go, well, why weren't you here? And they go, well, I didn't need to be here until you finally figured out what you were going to adopt. Now, you're going to adopt it, so it's my first opportunity to start saying something. I like to get the information early, I don't want to wait to the end and then, you know, kind of break it all to pieces and send it back. So I'm okay with that, but as, as you said, I think the key word is ready. I'm reading something and don't understand it, and you're telling me, a word's missing.
Right.
That would totally change the meaning of what I read.
Right.
So I don't know if it's ready or not.
Right. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Pratt-Tim. I was just going to say, when we went through the, you know, the comprehensive plan, which was, took a long time, but throughout that process, information was shared with the board, throughout the process that they could-
You had to lean forward.
That they could read, excuse me, and, and, but along the way, the board made some decisions to go ahead and adopt some of those items, such as cottage courts and things like that, because we didn't want to wait until the very end, because, you know, development continues to occur. While the committee's working, development continues to occur, so we can't just stop and wait to a certain extent. So we took some of the, the key points, and we, the board adopted those based on, on the work of the committee. I think the work of the committee is important, they're the ones that are, in addition to us being liaisons in the community and gathering input. I would like to see us move forward on, on what we can, I would like to staff to, I would like for us to allow staff to move forward and bring back substantive things for us to consider and discuss and debate, so that we don't end up doing the whole thing at the end. It's, call it piecemeal, or call it just portioning out the work, so that we can go ahead and, and move forward, and the committee and the staff can move forward. There will be time for debate, I think they're just asking for, can we move forward in this manner? That seems to be what I'm understanding, and I'm okay with that. We're not adopting it, so we're, but I think we'll have ample time to discuss and debate.
I think we need to move forward, but I think the workshop needs to be between the board and the planning board. The committee has submitted its work to us. I don't think we need to evolve down into a whole huge group of people again. I think the people that are going to have to adopt, such as Planning Board and make recommendations, and the Board of Commissioners, need to have the workshop to discuss the issues such as Webb's brought forward, as it comes forward, because, like I say, a word missing here or there can totally change the context. My concern is beginning to develop as, if we're only one-third of the way through our goals, and we're talking about September for the last two-thirds, I'm not sure that's a realistic timeframe, and my concern is, will there be another board sitting here when we finally finish the other two-thirds?
That was of the, I'm sorry, that was of the comprehensive plan. That's one-third of the goals, one-third of the policies of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, well, they still have two-thirds left.
No, with the UDO, we would only have two articles left, so we would be over, of the whole document, 64% complete at that time.
I'm just worried about our timeframes seem to be, and I know everybody's doing a lot of work, and people are volunteering a lot of time, and I appreciate it very much, but this process seems to be taking a whole lot longer than was presented at the very beginning, and we've been trying to catch up, and like Mayor Pratt-Tim says, we can't keep stopping our work based on the length of time it's taking to get this plan done, because we said we weren't going to do this, but life doesn't stop, the town doesn't stop while we're trying to adopt a UDO. So moving forward makes sense, but I think the committee that's going to discuss the changes that you're proposing to bring forward, needs to be the ones that are going to have to adopt it.
Right.
I agree with Webb a lot on this, there's a lot of gray, not black and white, in what I've read, and it's, I know you two also served on a lot of the committees, so your understanding is a lot clearer when it comes to what the intention is, but without moving forward in a direction that's going to better us, why just to say, okay, let's do it, just to meet a time schedule? I'd rather do it right now than have to find time to come back and fix it.
Right. Although, I also am concerned about if, if we don't, if we don't take the parts that we can, I'm also concerned about what would happen at the end of the process, because, I mean, this does have to go through the process of Planning Board actually adopting ordinances, recommending them to us, us debating them, and then adopting them, which is going to be itself another time-consuming process, and we try to jam all of that into one big step at the end, that's also a lot of material to consider, so to the extent, I mean, it's, it's, it's an accelerated, it's a lot of material, it will go through this process that we use to adopt all of our ordinances, which is to go through the Planning Board, consideration, refining of language coming to us in, in good order. I would be concerned about what would happen, though, if we pushed it all into a, tried to push it into a lump.
Let me, let me just give you a specific, and then you can help me maybe get there, but using the one that I used, where dwellings was left out, which was, where is it again? But it said, "Two examples," which are really three, "include allowing accessory dwelling structures." Just that in and of itself means nothing to me. Does that mean going back into existing neighborhoods and changing the zoning ordinance so people can put another house on their lot? Is that what that means?
Yes.
Then why can't we say that? I mean, because I don't think you'll get the support from the people if that's what you're saying. I mean, everybody wants to have more housing opportunities, but if you start, everybody chose their neighborhood for a particular reason, and if you're going in and changing the zoning to make their neighborhoods a totally different thing, I don't think you'll get that support. I doubt in Axhead Acres, you're going to find people wanting two houses on one lot.
Right.
I don't think on Villa Duce Drive you're going to want, you'll find that.
Right.
I don't think in the pond you're going to find that.
Right. But what, what we're looking at is a, is an outline of all of the issues that are being considered. We, what we haven't seen is, in which districts would this be offered? Under what kind of restrictions would this be offered and brought forward? And I think until we see that information, which would be the next step.
Yeah, but, I mean, in a past life, I had people bring to me, can I do X? Well, sure, you can do X. Can I do Y? Well, sure, you can do Y. Then they come in, can I do Z? Well, no. They go, well, so you'd let me do X and Y, and I wouldn't have done those if I couldn't have done Z. So I'm going like, okay, well, you can't do it. Well, you led me down a path. This is doing the same thing, this is leading down a path. If you say all the good words, all the right words, allowing accessory dwelling structures, it's leading people down a path, because nobody cares about that. It only occurs when somebody says, oh, you mean my neighbor can put a house in the backyard and put eight people in there?
Right.
Then there's an issue. And that's what I'm saying, I can't vote on something like this until I see what the specifics mean.
Well, no, I, I understand that, but what we're, what we're asking is, can, can we direct staff to go ahead and get the stuff ready that we can consider and vote on?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But I thought that, I thought the request was to adopt the values, and then we would see the specifics later.
No, no.
They're already adopted in, in the comprehensive plan.
They're already in the cop plan.
So you don't consider this a value statement?
Well, to, to some degree I do, but it's already embodied in a plan that's been adopted.
The cop plan was adopted and-
Is this adopted?
Yes, those values are. Yes, they are.
In the cop plan.
So we have, then, if it's adopted, then it would be taken out of that and placed right here, so why are words missing here?
We were summarizing, we were summarizing the goals of the UDO through statements on page 6. These nine statements, A, B, C, D, those are all summaries of how we're going to accomplish the policy. The policies listed below it are actually, have been officially adopted and are part of the comprehensive plan, and just, they are word for word, verbatim from the plan, copy and paste, of how we're going to accomplish the summary goal that staff wrote. So what you're reading in item C is actually a summary of what we're trying to accomplish through the UDO.
Okay, I, I won't delay the discussion, but I'll, I'll just let it be that I'm very confused.
Okay. I think what we will do is we will try to clear up the confusion as we go forward. So, anybody else? Okay, so-
We provided direction.
Is it, is it a fair statement to say that we would like to consider fully developed ordinances in these areas as soon as they can be made available and brought through the Planning Board in the regular process?
With the inclusion of a, is that with the inclusion of a workshop?
Yes.
Ahead of, ahead of the bringing it forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Cahoon?
With the board and the Planning Board, not everybody, because the committee has done its work and presented it to us to this date.
Right. Okay.
Agreed.
All right, yes.
Can one of you repeat that back, just so we're all on the same page?
My understanding is the board is asking or suggesting that we move forward, we move forward with the Sections 1 through 8, including the commercial design standards, to bring forward a final document to the Board of Commissioners as soon as possible. Ahead of that, there would be a workshop with the Planning Board and the Board of Commissioners to review and, and gain feedback on this draft document. After that point in time, we can move a final document forward for adoption.
Okay. All right, fair enough. Sounds right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda are items referred to and presentations from the town attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing I'd like to discuss with the board, but it is a closed session item, and that is listed under the Town Manager's Agenda.
Okay, all right. Thank you. In that case, we'll move on then to item L, Items Referred To and Presentations From the Town Manager. Did I skip something?
You skipped the Board of-
No, that's, that's where I just got to.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah. So the items from the town attorney are going to wait till we get down to that part of the agenda, so since he had nothing else, then for NK, then we're going to L. L1, Update on the Fireworks Display.
Believe it or not, it's getting close to July the 4th, and as usual, customary at the June meeting, we have an update on the festivities from our fire chief, Kevin Zork.
Very good, thank you. Here to update you, you can barely read that, I'm sorry. Here to update you and provide a little public service information about our annual fireworks display. As you know, July, Wednesday, July 4th, at 9:25 PM, the Nag's Head Fishing Pier is once again going to host the annual Independence Day fireworks, and we're very excited about that. You know, of course, again, we would want to thank, first off, the Outer Banks Visitors' Bureau for providing partial funding for the event, and most of all, Andy and Lovey McCann for their generous, I guess, just donation of their pier for the evening, because it does come at some expense to them and inconvenience, but they have been gracious over many, many years in letting us, allowing us to use that facility. The fireworks event is months in preparation, and we've been involved in planning for this event since January. It requires a high degree of, I guess, cooperation with all of our stakeholders, in addition to the permitting and the services that are required. We've worked with US Coast Guard, we've worked with Deer County Emergency Management, EMS, all of the Nag's Head departments, police, fire, EMS, ocean rescue, the Deer County Government, even Jockeys Road State Park is included in the Incident Action Plan this year. So there's a, there's a high degree of interaction to make this, to help this happen every year, and it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful event. I asked Town Clerk Carol Morris to do a little research on fireworks, past fireworks, and, and it appears that the first fireworks displays were in the mid-'90s, and I'm sure maybe some historians on the board will, will find out that exact date, but we've been doing it for quite a long time. I'll tell you that none of the past fireworks displays that we've provided and facilitated have been as spectacular and as safe as they are today, and we have all the necessary precautions in place to continue with that tradition. I think that fireworks in Nag's Head is the largest crowd gathering that we sponsor and participate in, have become a valued and traditional activity. Everybody really enjoys them, people schedule their vacations around these fireworks and looks forward to them with great excitement. It's heartwarming to me to know that the people who first perhaps watched fireworks in Nag's Head as children are now bringing their families and their children to watch the fireworks here as well. So I think we've definitely found a common bond, and they're enjoying those fireworks just the same. Once again, Zambelli International will oversee the Pirate Techniques Display. The entire town is looking forward to this display. The fireworks will last about 20 minutes on July 4th. We suggest that all the observers, the community, be in place at least an hour before the show. In the chance that inclement weather postpones the event, we will hold them on July 5th, Thursday, July 5th, in replacement, so. Those attending the show are encouraged to park east of US Highway 158, South Corotan Highway, and enter the viewing area at one of the town's beach accesses. Please use the caution, use caution crosswalks when attempting to navigate the roadways, keep control of children, and remember that the personal use of fireworks or skylanterns in Nag's Head is illegal. At the conclusion of the fireworks, spectator, pedestrian, and vehicular traffic will be under the guidance and exiting- under the guidance and exiting by Nagshead police. I spoke with Joy Greenwood from Jockeys Ridge State Park. Superintendent Greenwood indicated that Jockeys Ridge is a wonderful place to view the fireworks, and they encourage people to visit there. She did mention that the fireworks, you know, that the park would be open late on July 4th to accommodate the larger-than-average crowds that they expect, but she did want me to mention that if people visited the park and the gate was closed, that means the parking lot's full, and they're going to have to seek other accommodations. People who want to call the park can do so at (252) 441-7132 for more information. Anyone that has any questions about the fireworks display can access our homepage, nagsheadnc.gov. And Roberta's been putting out regular distributions and public information about the event, so people can do that, or they can call Town Hall at (252) 441-5508. And we encourage everyone to come out to Nagshead and enjoy a great fireworks display. It's going to be a super night, as always, and looking forward to seeing the public. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, board members? I do hope somebody will find that date, because if it was mid-'90s, I mean, '95 was 23 years ago. If we're coming up on the 25th anniversary of our fireworks display, it would be a nice messaging to put out there, if we haven't already. This is... Somebody will probably find out that this was year '25, and that we missed an opportunity to give it a bigger plug than usual, but it'd be nice if we could.
We have one year without.
Oh, okay. I didn't know we missed a year. So, thank you. Webb?
Yeah, I would like to go back and say the first fireworks were probably in the '70s and '80s, and they were put on by the Galleon and Mr. Crocker.
Oh, wow.
And he funded them privately, and after he retired, there were no fireworks. And there was such an outcry, that's when government got involved and started redo... started the fireworks again, because everybody expected fireworks.
That's good.
So, I do want to give Mr. Crocker his due.
Excellent. Good. Thank you for... I didn't know that, so that's good to know. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Cahoon? All right. All right. Great. Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is a request for a closed session, and I think there might be a modification to this. No?
No.
Okay. All right. Then, a motion would be in order to request the closed session.
Should we do both closed sessions?
Yeah, there are two different ones listed, or two different purposes, I should say, listed there.
I'm sorry. Yes. So, the motion... Can the motion be for both purposes in a single motion?
Yes, sir. Sure can.
Okay. Then that motion would be in order.
Make a request for a closed session in accordance with general statute at 143-318.11A5 regarding the potential acquisition of properties located at Cuddy Sark Lane, Lot 66, and Carolene and Colony, Lot 36, and with general statute 143-318.11A3 to confer with the town attorney regarding a matter with the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege, and also according to general statute 143-318.11A2 to discuss honorariums.
Very good. So, you've heard the motion. Was there a second? All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. We'll be in closed session. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Leidy, would you report on the closed session, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the board did discuss the three different types of items that they entered closed session to discuss. The board did take action on one of the items that regards an honor or award, but it would still be premature to disclose that at this time.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda would be the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Commissioner Cahoon, a discussion of pedestrian safety in the Whalebone area.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, a couple of local businesspeople have approached me, and then I have sent an email to the board as well, about the lack of visibility in Whalebone and that whole general area, say from Gray Eagle Street right on around to Gulf Stream, with a number of pedestrians that are there, the Janet's Pier traffic. And while, in our recent discussion earlier, Land use 16 talked about the night sky, of which I'm a big proponent, I also am a proponent of public safety, as is everybody else. And that area appears to be extremely dark. Pedestrians, you can't see. I also noticed one resident at night that I happened to see, because I sit outside a lot, using his flashlight, who is legally blind, trying to motivate that street back and forth from restaurant to his home. And it's pretty dark out there. Part of the problem is occurring that Janet's Pier has an inordinate number of lights that are out that need to be fixed. There are streetlights on Highway 12. I don't know if they're ours or who they belong to, that are out. They need to be fixed. But we have two crosswalks pretty close together, one right at the intersection of 12, 1243, Janet's Pier, Whalebone Park, which is pretty dark. So, at some point, we need to think about how we're going to address the visibility problems in that area. If we're going to... If one of our goals is increased pedestrian use, we're talking about sidewalks and so forth, we need to have some lighting in that area, as busy as it is with our number-one beach access being Janet's Pier and accessory uses across the street. And the other is getting lights fixed that are contributing to the problem more so than it is already. So, I bring that to the board for discussion and thought. I'm not asking for immediate action, but I am trying to make the board aware of what is occurring and what has been brought to me by others in that community. Full disclosure, I live in the community, but it was brought to me as issued by others.
Okay. Before I go to other commissioners to ask, I'll ask the manager, what is our line of communication to the pier for getting things like light fixtures? Is it just to contact the pier manager?
Yes, directly to contact the microimage, and then, you know, he would have to satisfy any of the requirements for lighting on that property. And we could... We'll make that contact today.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
And the other is, can we check and see if it's our lights that are out?
Yes, ma'am.
That we're paying... If we're paying for lights to Dominion Power, or Dominion Energy, or whatever name they go by now, if we're paying for those lights and they're out, they need to be remedied as well.
Yes. Okay. And can we stretch that conversation to the lights that are at our beach accesses that aren't working?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay. So, we need to do those, both of those communications, and we may need to do a survey of the lights to tell them what ones are out.
And I'm very appreciative of the information that was given to me about the lights and the bollards and so forth. It'd be nice if any of these companies would like to work with the town for grants or other things that possibly could... Evidently, they've done a lot of work in the Outer Banks, but it'd be nice if we could figure out, as we move through the process of installing bright lighting ideas that are not prohibitively expensive.
Yes. Agreed.
I think that crosswalk... They have those in southern shores.
Yes.
And they're very bright even during the day.
Mm-hmm. And I've brought that forward several times from Florida, that they have crosswalks that are active, motion-activated, not button-activated, that blink and flash and let you know there's somebody there.
And in talking, like, with these signs, with the manager, my understanding is that you have to have some sort of bollard in the middle of the road?
There's different motion sensors. You can have in various arrays, but you... The one that's being set up at the Little Bridge does have bollards right at the entrance. So, when the pedestrian comes into the bollard, it automatically comes on. There's other motion.
But you don't have to have anything in the center of the road?
Uh, not... Not for these.
Okay. Because if that was what my understanding was, in Currituck and in Sanderling, they have these, and they're tripped not by pedestrians, but by the vehicle coming, and there's nothing in the road. You know? So, there's precedent for them in Deer County and Currituck.
Right. Okay.
I agree. I'm supportive.
So, I guess, in addition to the lights that are out at the pier and at the beach accesses, I think that we would... We've talked about it on all of the beach road, but I think we... In my mind, we would like to begin to explore lighting at our crosswalks in terms of flashing crosswalk signs and illuminating those crosswalks with... And with solar lights, if we can do that and avoid the infrastructure cost of hardwiring.
Mayor, could I further ask that we do a lighting survey in that area? I don't know who we get to do, whether it's internally, but somewhere from Gray Eagle to Gulf Stream, do a lighting survey and see which areas are prohibitively dark and dangerous, not just the crosswalk, but as you go up and down, north and south?
Yes.
And see if a streetlight strategically here, whether it be solar or electric, would help solve the problem? And it may be that one or two lights may solve some of the problem, as well as fixing some of the lights.
Right. Okay. Yes, I think that, and that's... There's been a little bit of conversation about that and getting a consultant, so that if there's liability of leaving an area dark, that we have somebody who's responsible for that set of recommendations, and so that we don't spend money on putting up some lights and then leave a dark spot that's in a critical area.
And it may be that we need to work with DOT as well, since Highway 12 is a state road, and that if there's a hazard on that state road, that they may be willing to work with the town to help resolve that issue.
Okay. Did you get all that?
Got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that forward. And I did communicate with the folks who brought that forward and thank them for that The next item on the agenda is the mayor's agenda. The first item is, under the mayor's agenda, is consideration of a resolution requesting the North Carolina General Assembly to fund the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund. And I believe that they have... Has there been a final vote on the budget at this point? I'm not aware that there has, so...
Waiting for the governor to sign it?
Okay. It may be. So, this... In terms of its timeliness, this was the first meeting at which we were able to do this. I would recommend that we proceed so that we can get ourselves on record, and in particular with regard to the last, in terms of the resolution and some of the language there, and so that we can discuss this. If you don't mind, I will read this, as customary for resolutions, and then we can see if there's any discussion. Whereas North Carolina tourism represents an economic engine that is vital to North Carolina's future economic prosperity, it generates tax, state tax revenue that benefits all North Carolinians. And whereas one of the cornerstones of North Carolina's tourism economy are its pristine beaches that attract visitors from around the world, and whereas in order to sustain North Carolina's tourism economy and safeguard the tax revenue that it generates, it is imperative that the state's shorelines remain healthy, vibrant, and sustainable. And whereas the shorelines of North Carolina are under constant threat of natural hazards and erosion, which has an adverse impact on wildlife, public infrastructure, and private property. And whereas in recent years, federal funds for beach nourishment projects have decreased significantly, forcing coastal communities such as the town of Nagshead to use local dollars to fund beach nourishment projects. And whereas, as more of the state shoreline becomes vulnerable and in need of nourishment or re-nourishment, local dollars alone are unable to fund the amount that is needed to sustain and preserve North Carolina's beaches and safeguard the benefit that coastal tourism contributes to the state's economy. And whereas multiple areas in our coastal communities have undergone significant beach erosion in recent years that cannot be sufficiently addressed with local resources alone. And whereas the North Carolina Legislature in 2017 had the foresight to include in House Bill 56 a provision to create a Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund that would be used for costs associated with beach nourishment, artificial dunes, and other projects to mitigate or remediate coastal storm damage. And whereas the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund would match local dollars on a cost-shared basis, thus allowing local beach nourishment funds to be effectively leveraged for maximum benefit. And whereas although the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund has been created, a funding source has not been allocated by the state to provide the infrastructure benefit, the General Assembly intended in establishing the special revenue fund, therefore be it resolved, that the town of Nagshead Board of Commissioners respectfully request that the North Carolina General Assembly vote in the upcoming short session to fund the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund as an urgent matter of public importance to safeguard and protect the shoreline infrastructure that fuels the engine of North Carolina's tourism economy, that no current local revenue streams be used for the purpose of funding the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund, and that no existing occupancy tax be used as a source of funding for the shoreline management funds adopted the 6th day of June 2018. So, with that, I'll ask if there's any discussion. Seeing none, then a motion to adopt would be in order.
Motion to adopt is presented.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We've had an opportunity for discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you very much. We've already conducted the request for closed session. The final item on this agenda is consideration of a letter of recommendation to reappoint Commissioner Renee Cahoon to the Coastal Resources Commission.
Mayor, may I be excused from this discussion?
Yes, I think that that would be appropriate. So, a motion to excuse Commissioner Cahoon from the discussion of her appointment would be in order.
Set it.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you. So, you have the letter in your packet. Is there any... Let's get a motion on the floor. I haven't done this in good order this morning, and I apologize. Is there a motion with regard to the letter?
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to add that, you know, Mayor Cahoon has a wealth of experience. She's front by the chair. Several other towns have already sent letters of endorsement, and I think she serves our, all of our coastal community very well, so...
Couldn't agree more. All right. So, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you very much. That concludes what's on the agenda. Is there other business to come before the board?
Reminder about the budget workshop, maybe?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Reminder, what is the date of the budget workshop?
Monday.
June 11th.
June 11th.
At what time?
9:00 AM. June 11th, 9:00 AM, next budget workshop. Hopefully, final budget workshop. All right. There is nothing else to come before us, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
About recess? Are we having a...
Oh, I'm sorry. We are having... Thank you very much. Good catch. Then, we would... The motion would be to recess this meeting until the 20th.
Set it.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second? A motion and a...
At what time would that be? Is that... I can't remember. For the summer, 7 o'clock?
Seven.
That's at 7:00 PM. Thank you. You'll have to get a nap.
His fan.
All right. So... All right, so, the motion is to recess the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned, or we are recessed, excuse me.